I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. We have loaned our flag out, so we have a temporary flag on the screen, so would you please join me in the flag salute? Thank you. Ready, begin.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So I hope, we have a full house tonight. I hope everyone has a chair. There are some more additional chairs over here if anybody would like to pull one out and have a seat. I see people standing back in the foyer there. You're welcome to come in and get a chair from the corner back here. Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Villasenor, here. Mayor Protem Garola.
Here.
Mayor Brogie.
Here.
Councilmember Austin.
Here.
Councilmember Mendez.
Here.
Thank you. And moving on to item number four, can I get a motion to approve the agenda for the evening?
A motion to approve.
Mayor, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to change the agenda order. Is that okay to put that one on the floor here?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I'd like to see if we can move closed session item 12C, Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipate Litigation, and put that after our City Council Reports, Recommendations, and Comments. So in between Agenda Items seven and eight, so before Consent Calendar.
Can, I'm sorry, can you print that by me one more time?
Okay, I'd like to move closed session item 12C.
Just, to be clear, just one, one part.
One item, just 12C.
But one of the threats of litigation against the city.
Just item number 12C.
And move it to where?
And move it to right after our City Council Reports, Recommendations, and Comments, and before Consent Calendar. In between seven and eight.
Okay, that works.
One second.
Okay, one question. Would, that recommendation, would it prevent any adjustments to the Consent Calendar before we approve Consent Calendar?
No, because that will occur before Consent Calendar.
Okay. Okay, so we could make adjustments to Consent Calendar after, okay.
Consent Calendar won't be addressed yet.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to item number five, Presentations.
We want to vote on that. There was a first and a second.
On the motion to make that change to the agenda.
Oh, correct, okay. So, all in favor to the change, or to the approval of the agenda with the reference changes?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, the agenda's approved. Okay, now moving on to item 5A. And this is a City of Fillmore Community Notification System, and we'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, residents of Fillmore. Tonight I want to speak to you about the notify me system that we have available on our website. We want to make sure that the community is engaged, and so my presentation is just going to be a walkthrough on how you can go ahead and sign up, just so that everyone knows how to go about doing these notifications. So, the first step is you have to log into our website. So the URL is fillmoreca.gov, and you would hover right up here where it says "How Do I?", and you just click under "Notifications", and that takes you to the system that notifies you when an agenda is published, and you can select whether the notification is received via email or via text. You also have alert systems, calendars, whenever there's an event on the main calendar, community events, and then you have subtopics of other jobs that you, if you're interested in following what jobs are being posted at the city. There's different categories there that you can select. And then we also have a lot of news flash and newsletters and public notices that we put out, and they're subcategorized by each unit. So you can select to be notified in any topic that you have interest to follow with the city. So once you go here, you just have to click on notify me, sign in, and then we're going to presume that we are a new constituent signing on, so we're going to create a new account. And so you just have to go through the prompts, add your email. You can also select to, if you want to just link it to another existing account, if you have like an Apple sign on, Facebook, you can sign on with Google as well, or with Microsoft, so it's your choice. So then that will send you a verify email to the email you have entered. It's just a multi-security setup that you have. Let's see if this works.
While you're waiting, can I ask one question on those notifications? Do our notifications, when we have contracts, put on Planet Bids, do the, would those be able to interact, do you know?
No, but there's a separate Planet Bids portal where you would register it as a contractor, and then whenever there is a RFP or a bid, then it notifies you because you're a part of the registered vendors.
Okay.
So it's a different portal.
Okay.
I already have another account, so let me just, for purposes of the demonstration, I'll log into the other account. And so once you're over here, it would just send you back to the notify me, and then you would select, this little area here would have like a check of what you would like to subscribe to and the method. Let's say you, you're tired of receiving events from the community calendar. You can just unsubscribe from all the lists if you like to, and then you stop to receive the notifications after you do that. But I think it's important for the community to sign up by using this, because that's the main way that you can follow what's really happening on the city. We live in a world of information, and the information's at the tip of your fingers, but there's a lot of resources that are out there, different blogs that you think you're getting the information from, and I think if you go through to the website, it's the source of, you know, where it's coming from, and then you can follow us on social media as well. A lot of the press releases that we publish on the main website, those get posted as well on social media. I checked the subscriber list, and so this is a particular subscriber list for the website itself. We have about 500 residents who have registered, and then if you're just interested on receiving information just for the agenda purposes, and you don't want to go through the whole nine steps of signing up for the notify me account, when you come right over here under agendas, you can also just do a one single step, which would be adding your email address to that, and that signs you up to the backend of how we built the agendas, which is a completely different software, but we still have that information available, and so when we publish the agenda, that one goes out to more than 500 residents. So, that was just a quick little synopsis of how you can keep up with what's happening with the city. There's a cheat sheet also that was published at the Gazette this week, so tomorrow we'll be coming out, and then we publish the step-by-step with screenshots as well. You can find that on our website, right under the news flash, right here. And I think it was that we were here to inform you, I believe so. Right, Adely, you published that on the news flash? We'll make sure that it's up there tomorrow, so. I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, Mayor, I do have one question. Thank you. Thank you, Adica, for the presentation. For city, for folks in the city who want to share their event, is the community calendar something that's interactive and folks have access to, or what are the channels, I guess, to go about doing that?
So, we do have a policy from the city's standpoint that we do not publish anything that's non-governmental, and the reason why is because it's of the liability. We have no control of the information that's being published. So it's going to only be events that are city-sponsored events, or events that are happening at a level of another government agency.
Another agency, another public agency. Okay, great, thank you for that.
And on that note, just as a reminder, the owner of the theater, Sean McCully, has put up a citywide calendar, and it will reflect, anybody can email him, call him, reach out to him, and he'll add it to the calendar. So that's keeping track of things that are going on in sports, in the schools, and parks and rec, you know, includes city items as well, things that our clubs are doing, so that's just another way of getting information that you wouldn't, you might not necessarily find on the city website, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number six, Public Comments, and I have actually just one public comment. I have a lot of speaker requests for another agenda item further down the agenda, but our first and only speaker for Public Comments is Norma Amaro.
My name is Norma Amaro, and I'm here to speak about something that's important to me. I've lived in Fillmore 70-plus years. I won't tell you exactly how much, because you don't need to know my age, but I plan to stay here till the end, okay? I'm here, I'm really upset, because I love Fillmore, but I'm not proud of it, and I'm actually very embarrassed of disrespectful citizens that have gotten away with putting up posters citywide for yard sales and other things, and they never ever take them down. They leave them there for days, for weeks. I offered once not to get paid, but I would be willing to go around the streets and take them down after their event, whatever they're happening, and the city told me, no. I'm going to give you an example. I did it anyway. This person posted on a stop sign here on Central, information that he wanted the public to know. He never took it.
Can you show it to the audience as well?
Okay. He wanted you to know if you're selling comics, contact him. He puts it on a stop sign, never took it down, and that makes it look trashy out here. That's just my opinion. This person had a yard sale almost two weeks ago, never took it down. This is just one of dozens of people that don't do that, okay? Fillmore, in my opinion, is looking trashy. I'm sorry to say it, but it is. I was in Sawbank this weekend, it was amazingly beautiful. No signs, no trash, no posters, nothing. It was great, just beautiful. So I've been keeping track of this. On average, there is 10 yard sales a week, sometimes a little bit less, sometimes more, but four weeks a month, that's 40 times $15 is about $600 a month if it was being enforced to get the permits, but I don't think it is being enforced. Why even have it? I'm thinking either enforce it or abandon it, because people like myself, I may not like it, but I pay for it. If I'm going to have a yard sale, which I do once a year, I have my own business, I pay for my business license, but I still pay for the permit. Why? Because it's supposed to be that way. So, I have a suggestion, and I hope you take it. If a person comes in and pays their $15.
Norma paid $30.
Oh my gosh. This right here is a poster that if the city had a lot of these with your own border that no one can duplicate, when the person comes and pays their $15, they can get two or three or four of these. So when they put them on the signs, you know they got the permit. If it's something that does not, is not given by the city, then they should be getting a fine or a fee for that, because it's not fair. So I'm just asking, I would volunteer to take the signs down, but I've been told no. I love Fillmore, but I want it to stay clean. I'm tired of picking up trash all over the streets. I was told that code enforcement would do it, but they have a lot more to do than just this. So I'm just asking, please, enforce people to get the permits for their yard sales, and if it's not going to be enforced, then just abandon it. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have another public comment, and that would be from Brandy Hollis. Sorry I missed you, Brandy.
Good evening, council and audience. Brandy Hollis, I just wanted to say that I really appreciate the city council's way they're running meetings. You are really involving the public, and I think that's so commendable, so I just wanted to come up here and say thank you, and I really appreciate the involvement you're having with your community, each and every one of you, so I think that's really important. And I just want to remind everybody, when it comes to trash pickup, of course, people leave signs, that's, they should take care of them, but we also have a trash cleanup day every third Saturday of the month at 9:00 a.m. That meets at Taco Yamas. Everybody's welcome to join, and also, you also have to be the change you want to see. So I know tomorrow morning at San Caetano, me and Mrs. Rocha are going to come up with a big trash can and pick up trash while everybody's getting dropped off and we're helping people out. You know, people change when they see change, too, so I just encourage everybody here at the city council. I love the change, I love the involvement, and our community, let's make a difference.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandy.
Okay, moving on to item number seven, City Council Reports, Recommendations, and Comments. This is a time in which city council members can make recommendations for agenda items and things that they'd like to see happen.
I particularly liked the recommendation about the yard sale signs. My one question though, before we go down that path, was about enforcement of the signage. Maybe Kevin, you could speak to that.
Typically, code enforcement removes the signs as he drives around the city, and he does do that. He's been sick for four months, and he's been out of the office, he's now back in the office, and he'll return to removing those types of signs that you see.
One thing also, you could confirm, Kevin, that we have one code enforcement officer in particular, correct? And we do respond to complaints of obvious code enforcement violations, or at least investigate when there's a complaint, correct?
We, well, he's half of a code enforcement officer, if you can think of that, because he's also our building inspector. So he does building inspections all day long, and he also does code enforcement, and code enforcement's complaint-driven, and he has to investigate each of them. We just don't accept what's said. He has to check to see if it's valid, and that takes some time, but we follow up on every single complaint. So when people have complaints, please write them and submit them into us. You can do it by email, or through the website, or come in personally. We follow up on every one.
Okay. If we could, or I'd like to make a recommendation, that we at least consider the city-approved signage for yard sales, for permitting, as a way to improve the process?
And just for clarification, I think what the suggestion was from Norma Amaro is a specific sign format that they would get from the city when they pay the permit for the yard sale.
Right, that's my understanding.
I support that recommendation.
I do, too.
Okay. All right, moving on now, we're going to go to a closed session agenda item pursuant to the change at the beginning of the meeting to the agenda overall. We're going to go into closed session for just a period of time on one item, number 12C, regarding pending possible litigation. So we will just ask you to stay put. We'll be back shortly, and continue with the meeting after that. Thank you. and continue with the meeting after that. Thank you.
Council, enclosed session on item 12C. We are updated on an item with no reportable action. We'll resume the normal scheduled meeting. I want to get the mayor back.
All right. Thank you so much for your patience. I know you probably sat here for another thirty minutes or so. We should have served hors d'oeuvres or appetizers or drinks or something.
It was actually forty-two minutes. You left the timer on.[1386.01][1386.01](Laughter.)
I didn't know that.
Yeah, you did. I just reset it.[1391.36][1391.36](Laughter.)
Okay, no laughing. No laughing at all. Okay. So, moving on to item number... See? I didn't know that either.
I didn't know that either.
I know. Moving on to item number eight, the consent calendar. Have a motion to approve consent calendar?
I'd like to move approval with the removal of item 8C, with the exception that anyone who spoke to-- came to speak generally on any consent calendar items would have a chance to speak.
I'll second.
If they choose.
So, when you say removing it, you're talking about pulling it completely?
Completely from the agenda.
Tonight?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Comments? Comments would be allowed generally, though, for anybody who came to speak and would like to speak.
Okay. I have several speaker request cards for item 8C. So, again, to reiterate what our mayor pro temp just said, just as a matter of clarification, I recuse myself from this of conflict of interest in it. So, I wasn't-- I didn't participate, so this is news to me. So, but to catch up, the item is being pulled from the agenda completely tonight, but we will go ahead and honor the speaker requests that were submitted if anybody cares to speak, or if you don't want to, if it's not going to be on the agenda, it's up to you. So, I'm assuming you're Bob?
I am Bob.
Hi, Bob.
Thank you.
Okay. And can I clarify before you start? For all the speakers that are coming up to the podium tonight, you have three minutes to speak. There's a timer that'll-- you can see it there. It'll be flat-- it'll be green, and then it'll be yellow when you've got thirty seconds left. Okay?
Do we need to still vote on the consent calendar?
Thank you. So, yes, before you start.
Yes.
So, aside from that, are we going to have a motion to any other changes to the consent calendar?
We had a second from Albert, I think, so...
Okay, a second. Any other changes? Okay, so this item is being pulled. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the consent calendar moves forward, except for the revision that we just announced. Okay, Bob. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, thank you. My-- I'm Bob Barrig. I'm the owner of Sespe Industrial Park, and my tenant, John Meadows, is here and brought a lot of his friends tonight. And I apologize for, you know, filling up your chamber here. It's actually his fault, not mine. But the reason we're here is because I could talk about the notice issues, but what I'm really concerned with is there's-- and I mentioned this two weeks ago when I came before the council and suggesting you not put this on the consent calendar and consider rehearing it. And I'm-- I think, did you decide you're not going to hear the matter at all tonight? Is that correct?
That's correct.
But you're still going to honor the speakers. I think that's-- that's perfect.
Correct, yeah.
And really, all I have to say is there's-- there was a-- there's a lot of differences of opinion as to what happens to existing projects. And I know there was comments made at the planning commission hearing that a lot of people relied on, but then subsequent comments, conversations with staff by both myself and John would indicate that the existing tenants that were out there couldn't necessarily continue to operate. And that's-- that was what engendered so many people coming out today. I did have an app-- active application for a mini storage project. I'm not going to get into that at all because I think that's completely separate and distinct from my concern that John and his tenants be able to continue to do business out there as they have for approximately ten years. And I'll just leave it at that and let John talk and let some of the other members have their say. I think it's great that they can talk a little bit tonight because a lot of them probably won't want to come out when you do rehear this.
Sure, yeah.
Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, John Meadows.
I'm going to ask for just a little bit more time. I'll be as quick as I can, please. I'm the owner of JMI Storage. That's the property from Pole Creek to Eldorado Mobile Homes Estates, south side of the highway 126. Can I have a show of hands for who's here to support JMI Storage tonight?
Thank you.
John, and I apologize, but we can't go over the three minutes, so that's...
My name's John Meadows. I'm the owner of JMI Storage, Inc. I kindly ask-- first, let me-- on February 20th, I received a phone call from the property owner, Bob Barrig, where he informed me that I would be shut down, and he recommended that I go speak with Kevin McSweeney in the planning department. On February 21st, I met with Kevin and asked what the problem was with my business, where he said to me, and I quote, "You are operating an illegal business, and you will receive from city council a letter of cease and desist." I asked on what grounds, and he replied, "You never had a permit to do what you were doing out there." I told Kevin that I would take my concerns before city council. The property owner nor JMI Storage has ever been informed or notified of any violations, wrongdoing, code violations, or any illegal business operations. This also would include notifications pertaining to zoning ordinance amendments or changes, including 24-956. What I'm interested in knowing is how can a business of ten years, whom does have a valid conditional use permit and current city business license, be simply erased? Yes, my business has been operating for ten years, doing business the same way, with a business license and a conditional use permit, which was signed by Mr. Kevin McSweeney. JMI Storage is very concerned about its surrounding neighbors and the community in general. This business was started because every time I looked out my kitchen window, I had to stare at a neighbor's trailer, which ended up in my storage yard and in turn created a happy neighbor. We provide a clean, safe, healthy environment for our customers. There's no exception. It is my belief that the planning department has misled the planning commission and city council and the planning department's survey and recommendations on what should be done with existing storage facilities. I will now read from page four of nine from the proposed 24-956 amendment. Recreational vehicle accidents are a risk with increased numbers in the area as they are prone to problems such as blind spots, extended braking distance, lack of maneuverability, poorly balanced loads... poorly balanced loads, and inexperienced driver. The state of California does not require that drivers receive special training or permits to drive an RV, whereas professional truck drivers undergo specialized training. That is an insult to everybody in here tonight, saying they don't know how to operate their vehicle.
And John, I'm sorry, you have 30 seconds remaining.
This offends everyone here. These people have worked very hard to be able to afford these vehicles, and my customers are great operators of their vehicles. In fact, I was so offended that I went to Chief Garola and asked him if he had ever responded to any RV accidents in front of our facility, and he said, "Never, not in my knowledge." I also went as far as to the Ventura County Sheriff's Department to Deputy Halliwell, Watch Commander, and asked him if our place was a hazard or anything of that matter, where he clearly stated, "No, everything's great. It's safe. It is not a public hazard."
And John, I'm sorry, I have to ask you to wrap it up.
Madam Mayor, can you take my three minutes? You have five minutes as well.
I'm going to put a pause on it. No, no, no.
We regularly allow extra time if you let us know ahead of time, so we'll gladly grant...
Yeah, we're not changing the schedule around.
I'm not changing the schedule around.
Yeah.
We allowed comments when normally there would not be comments.
So, anyway, I'll go ahead and allow another three minutes from somebody else whose three minutes I might get collecting from.
I'll give you first.
I need just a name.
Michael Preeb.
Okay. Okay, so finish up your 28 seconds, and I'll reset it for three more.
This offends everyone here tonight. Our customers have worked very hard to afford these vehicles, and my customers are great operators of those vehicles. In fact, I was so offended by this that I went to Chief Garola and asked how many accidents pertaining to RVs in particular that Fillmore City Fire and even Ventura County Fire has responded to at, near, or around our facility. To the best of his knowledge, his comment was none. Going a step further, I went to... Wanted to confirm with Ventura County Sheriff's Deputy Sergeant Halliwell, the local substation watch commander, that our facility was not a hazard or an unsafe facility for the public. His answer was no. We don't have any problems or safety issues out there. It is my understanding that there are other storage facilities that are grandfathered in. How can that be if I have been permitted to operate prior to their existence? We believe that we are... We too are grandfathered in, and we need your clarification, which has been impossible to obtain from the city of Fillmore across all departments. It was said in the planning department summary that we want to create jobs within Fillmore. This is not a path to achieve that goal. Last but not least, was it city council's intention to approve a new storage facility across the street from me on Highway 126 and then turn around and regulate JMI Storage out of business or make it so cost prohibitive to our... To enhance our facility that we would be forced out of business? Thank you.
Okay. Next, I have Enrique Alvarado.
I'm sorry. I've been here since 5:30 PM to be the first one, and I gave the owner, Bob, and then John, and I said, "I'm going to take their spot because they're the owners." But I was here at 5:30. I was the first one to sign, and it's my turn to speak.
Okay. I'm sorry. We've never had an issue with calling people in the order that they came into the room.
I've been here since 5:30, okay?
You have my spot. I'm ready to roll.
Thank you. Go ahead. Let me reset my timer here.
And if I could remind everyone, this is a business meeting, and you need to act accordingly, please. We can't have clapping. We can't have people standing up and talking unless the mayor calls you to talk. Not whatever. You can be cleared from the room.
Thank you.
Please be respectful.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, your name?
My name is David Escaville, and I've been living here since 1969, 55 years. And talk about your slogan, "The last best small town in Southern California." I hope you keep it that way. You know, John, he... I wanted to read the paragraph he said about, you know, being, you know, recreational vehicles. I think... I think we're better drivers than the semi-drivers. Look at what happened last year here. You know, we middle-class blue workers, collar workers, we don't have money to go to Europe. That's why we have RVs, to go and visit the United States of America, you know? You know, this is all we have, you know? In three years, I'm going to be tired. And this is what I want to do. I want to go around the United States of America, whatever takes... The time that takes to go around. And I invested my time to buy this trailer. I invested my time to buy a diesel truck so I could... So, I could obey by the laws and the... The gross weight on the, you know, the California laws of the highways so I could be in, you know, so I could, you know, obey the laws of the California Highway Patrol's, you know, policies in California. This is what we do. We do, you know, if you... I don't know if you guys have RVs, but it's nice to be in an RV and look out and have a fireplace out there and go to the Sierras or go to the desert and just enjoy the nature, you know? This is what we do. This is what everybody does here, you know? And I hope... I'm being respectful because I don't know you guys. This is the second time I've spoken since I've been an adult here in Fillmore. But I don't know you guys, so I want to be respectful of you guys. I hope you could be respectful for us RVers and reverse this and stop it. Because John and the owner, Bob, he's given us affordable rates here so we can stay. And if you stop that, you guys want us to park our RVs in front of our curb? Do you want me to tear... I don't got no room in my home. You want me to tear a piece of grass so I can put it right in front of my...
Sir, you have 30 seconds remaining.
You want me to tear a piece of my grass? I saved 50% of my... I tore 50% of my grass so I don't spend that water because it's expensive, right? So, I'll... If you guys shut that down, I would just put it right down in the middle of my house because, you know, I don't want to go outside of town. I don't want to go to Santa Paul. I don't want to go to Ventura. I don't want to go to Santa Clarita. It's too far, you know? We had... I had my Cal cover store on my trucks last year. I had my motorhomes broken into.
Your time is up.
You know, it's nice here.
Do you have any time?
Thank you very much. Okay, next.
Sorry. He was offered time from another speaker. Would you like that time? Are we going to allow that?
Okay, Ruben Pena.
Thank you, David.
I'd like to say thank you for hearing me. I probably have same questions that everybody else has in this room, which was probably a double standard of a new business going in across the street and an old business going out of business, that you're putting out of business. And he is affordable rates. What's the new guy going to be? And without competition, what is his rates going to go to? I think a hell of a lot more. You know, I don't know much what to say. I'm pretty sure everybody's thinking the same thing. Something's not right, you know? Not pointing fingers, but kind of weird. A lot per little fishy. That's what come up all of a sudden after 10 years. It's kind of weird. Does anybody else feel like that?
Sir, no.
Sir.
Please.
Don't clap. All right. I don't need much time. That's all I really have to say, you know? I just feel like the small man gets stepped on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ruben.
Okay, following, we have Bruce Anizu, A-N-I-Z-U, followed by Michael Prebe.
Good evening, city council and honorable fire chief and sheriff. My name is Bruce Arvizo. I just live over the hill, retired fire chief from LA County. I've been coming to John probably 10, 15 years because I'm a car guy, and my trailer, car trailer, has been there at his shop for probably that time. We were the first ones there. But what resonates with me is small business because every time I come here, and there's a lot of people that come here, I'm spending $50, $60, $100 a Chevron. I'm picking up donuts for the fire guys or myself. I'm going to the taco stand over here at Taco Yama. Used to be Margaritas until they were forced out of business. Go to Vaughn's to stock up on food and drinks before I head out on the road for a week or two. So, there's a ripple effect that's going to affect throwing 550 RVers like myself or other people that like coming here and like the affordable rate. I've been one of the lucky ones because I'm one of the first guys here. But it's more coming here for the convenience and also the service here in town. Tires. I bought two sets of tires this last two years, $700 of prop. I'm only one person. There's probably 20 or 30, 40 people that go across to Vic because Vic helps RV people. So, my thought is think about the ripple effect before you make a quick, hasty decision to take a small businessman and kind of force him out. But the ripple effect is... This is only one tenth of the people there. It's 550 of us that are in the same boat. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Michael Prebe? Oh, okay. Thank you. Moving on to Mandy Franco, followed by Lloyd Barcroft.
Hi. So, I just want to let you guys know, we've been there probably like a year and a half now, bought a motor home, okay, which is a lot larger than others. When we first bought it, we started looking around here in Fillmore, went through, you know, Google, found certain places here. Everybody like, "No, we don't have space. Nope, sorry, we don't have space." Okay, well, we only... They only had maybe two larger spaces, which I'm like, "There's no way." You know, we can't wait that long for someone to move out or whatever it may be. JMI, I didn't actually see it, but someone referred me to him, and I thought, "Okay." Looked at the spot. I said, "Oh, that's... There's pretty big there." Called him, and he was nice enough to say, "You know what? Go ahead and come on in, take a look, see if this is what you're looking for." By the way, my husband's very picky. He doesn't like it on dirt. He doesn't like this, that, whatever it may be. So, we ended up coming to his spot. Super nice, communicative, understands, okay, we're coming, you know, going to leave it off, whatever it may be. I was under the impression it was going to be super expensive, like all the other ones I had called in Fillmore. They were not expensive as other areas, but more pricey. And I was like, "Oh, wow." When he gave the price, I was like, "Oh, wow." Like, "That's really good. Now, understand why there's so many people there," you know, which makes sense. And it's just sad to know that he's hopefully not going to be done. But I mean, if he is, it's going to be hard for all of us here financially, and it sucks. And I hate to get so emotional about it, but it's like they said, "Small businesses running out of Fillmore." Again, best small town. It doesn't seem like it anymore. It's turning like Oxnard, like, it's bad. I mean, this is a community we're supposed to... Everybody gets along. Everybody knows each other. And unfortunately, it's sad that it has to turn out to be this way. So, hopefully, whoever it is needs to reconsider, hopefully keep him here, and all of us stay, remain with him, and I don't know, and just make Fillmore better because unfortunately, it does seem like it's just going downhill. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lloyd Barcroft, followed by Dana Thompson.
Carrie, good afternoon, Mayor Carrie and council. My name is Lloyd Barcroft. I retired out here. I bought a home out here. And before coming out here, I had equipment and stuff. I still work a little bit, and I have a storage in there. It's convenient for me. It's 24/7. I can get in and out. There's got to be, I'd say, 30, 50 feet in between the storage and the street for the parking where you can pull out. You can see the traffic going both ways. I don't see where it's going to be, and it hasn't been a hazard. The only hazard that I've seen coming out of there is coming out of Eldorado, the people coming out of there, and I think you know about that because I live right there. They got a gate going through where I live now, and they're using that. I don't see any kind of biohazard in there, environmental hazard. John takes very good care of the place. He... You can get on the phone with him 24/7, and he'll come out and do something. Something's wrong. The place is clean. You can turn around in there. There's plenty of room. The gate comes out, you know? And to make all these changes that you want to do over there to make it, I guess, the front of it look like... I don't know what you want to do there. But it's going to drive up the costs. It's going to... We're all going to have to pay in there to do all this stuff that you want to do over there. I don't know. And anyway, I'm saying I retired out there. I put it in there. It's affordable for me. If something goes up in cost for me, just taking food out of my mouth or recreation or whatever I do, golf, I don't know what else to say. But I see that right here that this has been up in the air since July 7th, 2023, 2023, on here, and John just got noticed in February. He said that it was supposed to be cease and desist in February, and it says it goes to, what, to the 26th of May on the 2024, right? So, that time, I guess. I don't know. But the only problem I've had is with Eldorado. I've never had any problem with any of this stuff. Anyway, that's about all I got to say. I probably don't need all my three minutes. John's been there for 10 years. I've been there for five years, and I hadn't had one problem. I haven't heard of any accidents coming out of there, and I live right behind it.
30 seconds remaining.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lloyd.
Okay, Dana Thompson, followed by Bob Brenzel.
Good evening. Today, I stand before you not just as a concerned citizen, but as a voice for the hundreds of families and individuals who are on the brink of being unfairly impacted by the proposed zoning changes. Our community treasures its local businesses, especially those that have served us for years, providing essential services at reasonable prices. Among these is a local travel trailer storage facility, a business that has become a cornerstone for over 300 clients, including myself, offering us a safe place to store our vehicles at affordable rates. This proposal, while perhaps well-intentioned in its aim to regulate business operations, seems to disproportionately target this longstanding establishment, threatening to close its doors forever. The implications of this decision are far-reaching, not just for the business owner, but for all of us who rely on their services. It raises a question of fairness, of supporting local entrepreneurship, and of preserving the fabric of our community. We understand the need for regulations for orderly development and for ensuring that businesses operate within certain standards. However, when those regulations unfairly target specific businesses, forcing them out of operation and leaving their loyal customers without viable alternatives, we must question the fairness and equity of such measures, especially when the alternatives being offered are at double the cost. It does not just impact the business owner, but each one of us, making it increasingly difficult for average families to afford these essential services. Furthermore, this proposal seems to undermine the principles of competition and free market. By pushing out an established business in favor of newer ones that charge significantly more, it not only impacts our consumer choice, but also hints at an unsettling trend towards monopolization, where only the well-off can afford certain services. Therefore, I thank you for reconsidering having 8C on the consent calendar and ask that you put it back out for public comment. Let us find a way to address any genuine concerns without resorting to measures that would unduly harm longstanding businesses and the communities they serve. We must work toward solutions that uphold fairness, support local enterprises, and ensure that our city remains a place where businesses of all sizes can thrive together, contributing to a vibrant and inclusive community. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Bob Brenzel. Petra, please hold your clapping.
Hi. I've spoken to this council about our RV storage project in the past. We recently transmitted an email to the mayor and council with concerns for our project going forward. The email read as follows. "Our project resides on a small 2.5-acre lot in North Fillmore. For over two years, we have been working on this project and have expended significant funds. We have worked closely with Kevin McSweeney and our design consultant, Jensen Engineering, to complete a quality design. During the entire design period, there was never any mention of the potential moratorium. Unfortunately, the moratorium shut us down, even though..." Unfortunately, the moratorium shut us down, even though we were set to submit our design package one day prior to the moratorium being put into place. We continued to expend funds right up until the day the moratorium began. Since the start of the moratorium, this council has been very understanding of our situation, been very supportive in finding solutions that would allow us to complete our project. The second reading of the proposed ordinance changes for self-storage, RV storage, is on tonight's agenda eight C. When I spoke before the council on January twenty-fourth, we were convinced that we were all good. We, I said, thank you much, we're going to be able to build our project. However, closer review of the ordinance changes, we discovered language that disqualifies us from proceeding. Specifically, there is language proposed in the code that reads, RV storage will only be allowed as an accessory to self-storage structures. In other words, no RV storage-only projects. It seems quite unfair that a self-storage projects are not allowed, are not required to include RV storage, but an RV storage-only projects are required to include self-storage. Doesn't make sense. Very nature of the two businesses are very different. Working with the city for over two years now was abundantly clear from the outset that we are an RV storage-only project. We never intended to be a self-storage business and over, and for over, and over a year, we were assured that our project complied with, complied with the codes right from the complete, right up to the completion of design and the onset of the moratorium. Being a small family business, impossible for us to comply with this proposed ordinance. As is written, first, the cost of constructing storage buildings is financially impossible for us. Secondly, if we did have the funding, the smaller size of our property does not lend itself to accommodate both self-storage and RV storage. By the time the storage buildings are built, leftover space for RV storage will be accommodated about fifteen to twenty units, RV units. We feel this ordinance unfairly penalizes the little guy and favors larger properties and more well-funded owners. To resolve this issue, we humbly ask the council to consider modifying the ordinance language to allow RV storage-only project facilities on smaller properties such as ours, or grant us a waiver since we're the only company currently working with the city in the pre-application process. In closing, I'd like to thank the council again for their support. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question from Bob, if I may. Sir, what's the size of your property?
Two and a half acres.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Julie Petra, followed by Brandy Hollis.
Hi, I just want to make some points about how important JMI is to me. I'm a widow with a woman-owned local business here in Fillmore, and I do use his storage to park my work vehicle at night. And that's pretty important. So that's like creating a job right there. Maybe the storage unit isn't, but it is housing vehicles where some people do use for work purposes, which, what's the difference between that and if it's a storage facility that has employees? It, JMI also provides a safe place. There's different hours that I have to sometimes pick up my vehicle for work. And it's safe, it's healthy, it's clean, and all the other aesthetics that you guys are thinking about putting into place, you know, it's just going to be a platform for graffiti. I really think graffiti should come into hand first. Maybe we should get that under control before we start thinking about building more beautiful places. Because my truck has already been graffiti before I had John's spot. And they're very hard-to-come-by spots are. I've been everywhere a year ago, and I got lucky after months of searching for a spot. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Brandy Hollis, followed by Gabriel Candelario.
I should not be on here for eight C. It doesn't say nine. Did I write eight on them all?
You had a lot written down there.
I know, I just put all the new business. But thanks for calling me up. I didn't read the ordinance, my eyes crossed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Gabriel Candelario, followed by Enrique Alvarado. Gabriel did? Okay, Enrique, Gabriel, I'm sorry. I'll let you announce your name when you get up here.
How you doing? My name is Enrique Alvarado, and I just want to reiterate that same thing that everybody else has said. JMI storage is affordable, safe, clean, and it's very convenient for us to be able to pick up our trailer. And the service level is also great. You're not going to find that anywhere else, what he does for us, how he pulls out our trailers for us, sets them up and props them, you're not going to find that anywhere else. So that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That was Enrique. Sir, sir, I'm sorry, you were Enrique?
Yes.
Okay. David Esquivel?
That was me.
Okay. I thought so. Gabriel Candelario.
Gave us time.
Done. Okay, that concludes all of our public speakers for item nine, our eight C. So eight C, again, is off the calendar, won't be further discussed this evening. And we will move on then to our next agenda item.
Mayor, sorry, if I could just make a point that for those, just making sure people understand that it is not voted, it didn't go forward.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor. Think about it. There's, there's a lot of good stories, please.
Thank you. We're going to hold off on moving forward until the room clears.
Eight C, eight C did not go forward. It did not go forward. Okay, just wanted to make sure everyone understood that.
Okay, so moving on, we are moving on to a new business, item number nine. I think we did, didn't we? I mean, we can do it again. Okay. Okay, item number nine, A, tax exempt lease purchase financing for water meter replacements and infrastructure upgrades. I'll turn that over to staff.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Brogie, I'm Deborah Cavallaro, Finance Director. Tonight we have item nine A, as staff recommends that the city council adopt resolution number twenty-four three nine eight eight to approve a five million, five hundred ninety-nine thousand equipment lease financing with Webster Bank for water meter replacements and infrastructure upgrades to implement certain energy savings equipment for the city. We have with us tonight Adam Pope from Columbia Capital, and Anita Luck from Alice Shire and Winder, LOP, to provide additional support to questions, support to questions council may have. On January tenth, twenty twenty-four, Columbia Capital, the city's municipal advisor sent fifteen solicitations for proposals to financial institutions for a tax exempt lease purchase financing for the water replace, meter replacements and infrastructure upgrades. The city proposal was a twenty-year with an option to prepay with grant proceeds if the city receives an award for the meter project. The city received six proposals, and after careful review, Webster Bank was selected. Webster Bank had the competitive fixed interest rate of four point six one percent and favorable redemption provisions, including the city can prepay up to two point five million of a lease without penalty with the proceeds from the grant if awarded. The term of the lease is twenty years. The annual rental amount was approximately four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, with the city's plans to play the lease from the water fund. However, the water fund is not, did not secure the bonds, as this is a general fund security. The lease meets the city's policies on debt, the state government code with regards to interest and savings. The terms of the lease are in accordance with those findings as provided under the fiscal impact. The lease shall be payable from all legally available revenues of the city, but payment shall be offset by revenue recovery guaranteed in the contract and the operational savings of the new equipment. This meets the city's council for infrastructure, their goal. Strive to ensure that Fillmore has the necessary components for new construction and maintenance of all infrastructure. So this is the end of my presentation, and we are available for questions. As you can see, Anita is online, and I believe Adam, are you there? I might have lost Adam.
Sorry, Deborah.
No, I'm here.
Oh, good. As Adam is basically about three hours ahead of time, I believe, so.
Can you make introductions again? You have two.
Okay, it'll be Adam Pope, he's from Columbia Capital. And then Anita Luck from Alice Shire and Winder, Winder, God, I always make them two together, LOP. So they're here to provide and answer any questions, especially with the detail on the financing. So as they, as they are there.
Okay, to council, any questions right now for staff?
I have one general one, and it refers to the hundred and one, hundred and two percent, hundred and one percent, and hundred percent. What is that based on? Is that based on paying off the entire loan at a hundred and two?
Correct. So whatever our balance is at that particular time, that would be, as you call a, I guess, a prepayment penalty. But as you see, it goes down to one hundred and two, one hundred and one, and then a hundred.
And then it levels out.
And then it levels out, so there's none. And also, the nice thing again is that provision for that two point five million grant that we actually just submitted, and in hopes that we do receive that grant, and that money will be used to apply to this lease.
Anything else?
Generally, the agreement with Will Dan, does that only go towards principal? Like the, the amount that they would cover if we did not receive that or find those gains in the water meter infrastructure itself versus like principal and interest? What is, does it apply to the whole thing or just the principal part of it? Like, would we, would we be stuck with interest costs after Will Dan paid their part?
For their, for their, pay for their part, I believe it would be covered for both. So if we're there, our revenue's four hundred and thirty-seven. If we're any short, that would go towards the principal. And correct me if I'm wrong, Adam or Anita?
No, I believe that's right. Yeah, the, the total payment is four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, roughly. It's, it varies from, from period to period, but that includes principal and interest. So I believe the, the Will Dan contract between the guaranteed recovery and then the operational savings, we cover that amount.
I guess the, one other, one, does this, does this affect at all our agreement with Will Dan for their engineering services to separate?
Those two separate, yeah, this is separate.
If something changed with the engineering services, this remains intact?
Okay, if there aren't any other questions for staff right now, I'll go ahead and go to our public comments. We have one public comment request from Brandy Hollis.
Good evening. Gosh, I'm really tired, so please excuse me. I'm just up here commenting on this comment because people are watching tonight and watching how you guys do things, and you really do take the public's interest and public's comments on agenda items. So people are watching you guys and striving to be like you guys, just so you know, and an example, and members of your community are appreciating it. So I'm up here talking on all agenda items to show that it can and does happen. So thank you, guys.
Thank you.
But the rest is all coming on.
Okay. Okay. Anything further discussion for staff? Do we have a motion?
We do, Mayor. I'm, I will make that motion that our council approve the five million, five hundred ninety-nine thousand equipment lease financing with Webster Bank.
I second.
I have a motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes?
Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Okay, moving on now to item nine B, appointment to the Cultural Arts and Recreation Commission.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight we're here to recommend that city council, consistent with the recommendation of Mayor Brogie, appoint Karina Forsythe to fill the vacant position on the Cultural Arts and Recreation Commission. This position became vacant because of Lonnie Farr's passing. And so we would be, if you approve it tonight, council, her term would be through January thirty-first of twenty twenty-five, which would be filling in the vacancy from Lonnie Farr. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. Ms. Forsythe is here on the audience tonight as well.
Does, does this completely fill us up with five consistently?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to find out if Ms. Forsythe has any words or comments at all? You don't, not necessarily, don't want to put you on the spot, but.
No, I'm honored to.
Thank you. And, and I just have to add that I think she's going to be just a fantastic addition. If you see the things that she does around town and, you know, just her, just overall abilities, you know, she's, I think, going to be a great addition. So thank you for agreeing to do this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so looking for a motion.
There was a comment from Ms. Holly.
Public comment?
Yes.
I call you up when you're not here? It's in my hand.
Hi, Brandy, again, Hollis. I just wanted to say I concur completely. I serve on other boards with her as well, and she's the perfect person. I don't think you could have chosen a better person. And I can't believe tonight I opened the agenda and saw her name. I was so excited. And so I look forward to serving with her on that commission and can't wait till she gets sworn in tomorrow. So, thanks, you guys.
Thank you. Okay, entertain a motion.
All right, I'll motion that we, the city council, have that recommendation of Karina Forsythe to fill the vacancy in the Cultural Arts and Recreation Commission.
One second. Okay, you can have it.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? This motion passes. Thank you, Karina.
Thank you. Thank you both for your service.
Thank you for waiting all evening. We waited a long time. Okay, now moving on to item nine C, consideration of dividing existing job classifications.
Thank you, Mayor, that item is mine as well. We are recommending city council to adopt resolution twenty-four thirty-nine twenty-seven, which will approve two not, two new job classifications, one of the planning technician and then building and safety technician, and adopt those job descriptions to adequately staff the city's planning department. There is a need to revise the functions of a full-time planning and building technician classification. So currently, we only have one classification that does both functions. And so we recognize that there is a need for us to continue to service our constituents in an excellent manner. And so we, by creating this, what would happen would be, the duties would be separated. One of the technicians will be handling all of the planning counter questions, and the other technician will be handling all of the building and code and safety issuing permits and so on. Both of the classifications would remain the same, same pay scale as well. They are represented positions, which means we already went through the process of meeting and confirm with the union, because it's what's mandatory under California law and government code. Union has agreed to move forward with the recommendation for management. We do have one incumbent that currently fills the role of the two positions. And so it is recommended that that incumbent will continue servicing as the building and safety technician, and we would fly out the position for the planning technician. This would encumber funds, and so we're requesting council to approve funding for the remaining of the fiscal year. The salary range for both positions is from forty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars to about sixty-two thousand per fiscal year plus benefits. So we're talking, once we've paid all the statutory benefits, it's about a hundred thousand dollars for the position. Because the fiscal year is coming to a term, and by the time that we fill in the position, we're requesting you to allocate the amount of, if I recall correctly, I think it was about twenty-five thousand dollars to, correct, from the general fund to cover what's remaining. about $25,000 to, correct, from the general fund to cover what's remaining of the fiscal year for the planning technician position. And so I've provided in my staff report how the allocation will be split, but the intent is to have cross-training as well, so that when there's vacations or, you know, sick days or emergencies that happen, someone can still be at the counter assisting and answering questions that may come and alleviate some of the regular oncoming questions from management so that they can focus on other tasks as well.
Great.
So that concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions.
Questions from council?
Just clear, the 25,000 was to cover, presuming a pretty quick hire through the end of this fiscal year before it gets budgeted into next year, correct?
Correct. So that's, and that's only for the new classification, because the current incumbent's already budgeted for.
Right. Okay.
Okay, then we do have one speaker request, that's Brandy Hollis.
All right, Brandy Hollis. I'm so tired, I'm slap happy. I'm tired. I concur with whatever Erica said. I'm just, once again, making a point, and I wish the people that were here earlier would have stayed to see the rest of what goes on to a city council meeting, and encourage everybody to actually come, show up, watch and join. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Words of encouragement, appreciate that. Okay, so I will entertain a motion.
I make a motion that the city council adopt resolution 24-3927.
I'll second with just a comment to staff thanking you for the inputs, or taking inputs from the public, but then especially from the council for creating this position, because it's apparent and responding, and that's how we do business and make things move forward. So thank you.
And I want just want to add to that, that, you know, I've seen the planning commission, planning department just working feverishly on so many different things throughout the years, and I think they badly need additional staff, make their job a little easier. So anyway, but, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, this motion passes. Okay, moving on to item number D, discuss increasing city clerk salary and adoption of ordinance number 24-965.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this year, city council discussed and approved the first reading for increases for city council starting the next year, for those who are city council then. Tonight, we're asking the city council to discuss whether or not to increase the city clerk's salary from $300 per year to $600 per year effective July 1st, 2024. The Budget Ad Hoc Committee is making a recommendation to increase it to $600. The impact will be included within the proposed 2024, '25 budget, which will be in front of you and hopefully first part of May for approval. So staff's recommendation is to approve this recommendation for you to have a discussion whether or not you want to do this. That's all.
I wanted to maybe just clarify, do we have any other elected positions that have not been considered for the same type of change?
Treasure.
Treasure is what came to mind.
City treasure.
Yeah. Would it be worthwhile to maybe not vote on this and put that in consideration, just as a?
We can bring that back to the legislature.
Yeah. So I would recommend maybe we don't move forward on this now, to actually consider just all those positions.
There's only one additional one.
Yeah. I mean, I guess it potentially could be added, but that may not have been a consideration when this was added as well. So a total of seven elected positions, I believe.
Yeah, I mean, I would still like to see this one go forward tonight.
I mean, this is, this is just pertaining to city clerk, correct? I meant, so this is ordinance?
Yeah.
Just pertaining to city clerk.
Okay.
And I just want to make a note here that this astonishes me that it hasn't been adjusted since 1953. That's like years before I was even born. That's unbelievable.
Wow, that's a long time ago.
So this is something that probably should have been looked at a long time ago. Anyway, so with that in mind, and then bearing in mind with what Mayor Prochem Corolla just said about down the road, bringing back the city treasurer for an increase as well, but let's move forward with this one. So I'll entertain a motion on this one.
Okay, I'll make that motion that we increase the city clerk's salary from 300 a year to 600, and also just with a comment that I'm glad this looks like it's effective July 1st of this year. It's an election year, and I know Olivia does quite a lot on election year, so that's my, that's my motion.
I second.
Okay, a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, this motion passes. Thank you. Oh, I just blew right past you again.
She's tired of speaking anyway.
I am.
Okay. Just sit there, just. But she should get the reasons, so should you guys add the lead last meeting? Thank you. Okay, item 9E, consideration of an ordinance to remove chapter 6.09 Growth Management Plan, and we will turn it over to Kevin McSweeney.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mayor, members of the council. This is a cleanup item. This particular ordinance, growth management ordinance expired in 1999. City staff's recommending that you approve the first reading of the ordinance to strike out this growth management plan. That's now out of date. And I put in the staff report a little explanation on growth management that's already occurring. The Ventura County voters approved SOAR, so each city has a ring around the city, and we have one too. So that is basically our growth management ordinance.
Okay.
Concludes my presentation.
Questions, comments for staff?
I have one question. What, what, what year does SOAR expire? I thought it was under?
No.
2050?
Fifty.
2050?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it came up again.
I thought it was up again.
It was a choice of either 30 years or 50 years, and it passed with 50 years.
Okay. I knew it was coming up.
Any other questions, comments for staff?
I guess maybe was there, had this ever been looked at before? I mean, expired 1999, to me, it just seems like why now, but versus?
We're just doing cleanup, having some time to go through the cleanup of many ordinances. We have a backlog that we'll be presenting to you.
Right. And then is there any, I didn't see a reference to the, it sounded like there was current state law that actually prevents this from being even renewed potentially, but, or there's no way to enforce this anyway?
This particular growth ordinance was based on population, the rate of population, which today, I don't think that's a legal method for growth management. So as much as I know.
Okay, I guess. Do you have?
Absolutely not.
Right.
I mean, ACV's trying to get you to build as much and as high and as dense as possible. So if we said, no, we can't take your project because of this chapter?
Yeah, I totally get that, but it should have been removed a long time ago, essentially, but we're doing it now because we recognize that.
We just remembered it was there.
Yeah. No, I just want to make sure.
I guess you'll be able to get more of this to us since you're getting additional staff.
Oh, yes.
Can I just make one other point here, just to, if we're going to be correcting things, it doesn't, SOAR is not save our open spaces, although that's what everybody says. It's actually save open space and agricultural resources.
Yes, that's.
So to be the correct acronym now.
That's correct. Thank you.
What?
Save our agricultural resources.
It's save, save open hyphen space, which is dumb, it shouldn't be that way.
Got it.
And agricultural resources, yeah.
Mr. Francis still around?
All right, so. You have a motion?
Okay, I'll make that motion, that city council approve the first reading of the ordinance, I'm sorry, no. Yeah, first reading of an ordinance number 24-966 to update the Fillmore Municipal Code to delete chapter 6.09 Growth Management Plan. And that includes sections and adoption of exemption from CEQA.
I second. You can have it again.
Okay, if a motion and a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, this motion passes. Okay, so that concludes that portion of the agenda, so we will move on now to item 10, committee, commission and board reports.
Okay, Mayor, I do have a couple of things.
Sure.
All right, I'll keep them pretty brief. Update from the Ventura Regional Sanitation District, this is regarding Tolent Landfill. So I know council member Mendez mentioned in our last meeting about Chiquita Canyon and the landfill going out towards Santa Clarita, and there are serious issues. There's escaping toxic liquid that has been bubbling up in these, and there's been articles about it. So we discussed this at the Ventura Regional Sanitation District and talked about Tolent. And I just wanted to let the public know, and this is from the director there at Tolent Landfill, that these problems that are happening at Chiquita are not in any way happening at Tolent Landfill. Specifically, the temperature of the gas monitoring wells has not reached 130 degrees. And what they informed me is that it's only when it gets above 145 that you start looking that there could be problems, that there could be just too hot underneath this waste, and you're going to start to see maybe some issues. Tolent Landfill is in normal operation levels, it's between 90 and 130 degrees. On top of that, Tolent Landfill has just installed a new flare. It's come online, and the flare is basically what burns those gases, right? That's all those, all those gases that come up from, from all of the waste, that's what the flare does. It burns it off to keep these kind of issues from happening. However, this is very kind of, kind of interesting little side note, an owl built its house on top of this new flare and actually caused some damage. So they're fixing it right now. They're actually talking to the Boy Scout troops to see if they can get the Boy Scout troops to build owl boxes, to have this owl have a home. So that's interesting. But that was the main, the main point of that is that these issues are not happening at Tolent Landfill at all. So it's not a comparison at all to Chiquita. However, what will be happening is more regulations on Tolent Landfill and all the other landfills because of Chiquita. So we'll keep the public up to date on that. Let's see here, also what happened at Tolent, they sort of, things went okay with those heavy rains in early February, however, when we had, I think like a week later, like a pretty bad spell where just a cell just kind of, just went and just landed over the top of Tolent, that also, that basically, it gave way to a little bit of a slide, and there was a drainage pipe leak, and there was, you know, need to clean that up. So that's happening at Tolent. And also, and this might be happening, I guess, at other places all around, again, back to, back to critters and back to, back to things like that, there's the squirrels everywhere, I think we know are really rampant. And what happened was the hillside was, as described to me, is Swiss cheese, and that is, you know, there's holes in the hillside, and as the rain just, you know, came tumbling down, it just gave way. So the Tolent Landfill is actually looking at like falconry, like falconers, and things to help control the squirrel population that keeps digging holes, and, you know, the land around the landfill can give way. Interesting, yeah, it was interesting to hear about how our natural habitat is, you know, impacting, you know, our lives in that sort of way. Okay, update from the Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance, there was a meeting, and we discussed an update from the tri-county, three-county renewable energy, it's called 3C Ren, and it basically, it just, it, it helps local businesses achieve climate goals, it's about energy savings. What's interesting about this is that this program and the funding to, to, to institute tools to help with climate change and for better energy savings has been expanded to the agricultural sector. So that was, that was one of the key updates there. Also, Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance is working on, they got funding to do a regional Ventura County Climate Action Plan. And climate action plans are basically frameworks or roadmaps to, to track and to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So that's happening at the county level. They have a bunch of stakeholders, including all the cities. I believe the city of Fillmore may have been contacted, asked to do a survey, seeing, you know, what, what the needs are in terms of, you know, in terms of contributing to this plan. First step is the plan, next step is, you know, implementation of that, and I'm hopeful that for all, Fillmore included, and also other cities that don't have local climate action plans, that this might be a model for something that's already, you know, something that we can look at later. And council member Corolla, I know you asked about, you know, a lot of things about climate action, greenhouse gases, rising temperatures, but also sort of on the other end of extreme heat is extreme cold.
Right.
Okay. And so I got a couple of answers from them, and that is, there are programs, again, back to the, I think they call it 3C Ren, tri-county regional energy network. And there's energy savings for home, weatherization, and basically helping local households reinforce their, their homes against all extreme weathers, right? So heating, cooling, that's one, that's one area where they're, they're working and trying to engage households in that, and again, look for funding, have tools, being able to do, to do things like weatherization. And also, there is a, I think I wrote that down here, a, okay, resilient, resilient central coast campaign. And that is, again, tri-county effort, and it's to let households know about just how to, how to be secure in your home and in your community when it comes to extreme weather. And so that includes also, you know, not just heat and drought, but also rain, mudslides, for example, like what's happening over in Santa Paula, Highway 150 being closed, you know, you know, that sort of thing, and, you know, how to, how to prepare, or how to prevent, and how to prepare and, and, and deal with those things. So just want to get back to you on that.
Thank you. Was that part of the 3C Ren or the VCA Regional Energy Alliance?
So that's part of the, well, so regional, the Regional Energy Alliance is members, they're members of the 3C Ren, the tri-county, what is Ren again? The Regional Energy Network, right? So the Ventura County Regional Energy Alliance is part of this 3C, tri-county regional energy network, and they have the things about home energy savings, whether it's, you know, different temperatures from hot to cold, and also they're, they're members of this resilient central coast campaign. And that, again, is trying to inform local households about how to, how to prepare for all types of climate disasters.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other council members with reports?
I, Chris? I haven't, we haven't had a VCA, Ventura County Animal Services meeting forever, but they did send us a update on what we're going to be charged for animal services this next year, and I'm sure Erica will be presenting that to us very soon. Right?
Yes, that's correct.
So we'll know what we're going to be increased from them.
Never goes down, does it?
No, it never goes down.
Okay, anyone else? I just wanted to let the public know that there is a Ventura County Transportation Commission meeting this coming Friday, if you're interested, nine o'clock. They are, they've moved the meetings from Camarillo City Hall to the Camarillo Library. Camarillo City Hall is being remodeled, and it'll be unusable for the foreseeable future, at least for a year. So we will be holding the Ventura County Transportation Commission meetings in, at the Camarillo Library. So if you can make it, join us. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to the city manager, item number 11.
A couple of updates tonight. Our shade structures, Troy met with the contractor at the parks, they took some measurements down for the post locations, they'll be finalizing the structural calculations and plans. They'll submit them for building probably in the next couple of weeks, they'll get that started. The dog park, we're having a pre-construction meeting here in the next couple of weeks, and they look like they'll be starting the project on March 16th. Finally, I met out there at the corner of C Street and Old Telegraph Road with Troy and the county engineers, talking about the bridge closure. They're looking at possibly having one lane open to traffic with lights on both sides, K-rails down the middle, so hopefully we'll get that within the next week or so, to have a one-way traffic. And so once it opens up, it should alleviate some of the backup that people are having on Grand Avenue out there, 126 as well. And that's all I have for tonight.
Great, thank you. Okay, so that takes us to our closed session. We do have some additional items on closed session. So we are going to adjourn to closed session for now. We will come back out after closed session and adjourn the meeting for the evening. So, thank you. So, thank you.
Okay, we are going to reconvene the council meeting. We just finished with our closed session. Specifically, we were in closed session to discuss, be updated on existing litigation, which we were updated. Council has no reportable action on that matter. There was also a reference conferencing about anticipated litigation on two cases. One, we were updated and there's no reportable action. On the second one, council unanimously agreed to litigation in one of those two cases. And then, that was it. So with that, we will go ahead and adjourn the meeting to March 12th here at 6:30 p.m. Have a good evening.